Hello.
Hello.
Oh, yeah.
We've got some stragglers coming in tonight. Good evening, Rick. Good evening, Ryan.
Hey, Tim.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Thank you.
Everybody's very quiet today.
Could be from Monday, I'm guessed.
All the weather.
Too hot.
Hundred and twelve in Portland, Oregon.
Cannot imagine.
No.
I believe that.
Yeah.
It's like we have everybody on. We'll to the seven o'clock hour to start. Julie.
Hello.
Hi, Julie. Hey, Carl, are you at Carl, are you at the pavilion? Looking good in the background.
He's been muted.
He nodded. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. He's waiting to be sworn in.
Uh huh.
So at seven o'clock, we have a full team on board. I'll call to order tonight's village councils for Monday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Mind everyone, we're meeting electronic. I believe everybody is in the village, but if they're not, if they would just please identify where they're at. Other than that, we'll say pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag. Very well done. Here of silence and then Mr. Mallory take a roll call, please.
Just trying to get a screen share up here and then a okay, roll call for June twenty eighth. And again, please, if you are not in the village of Vicksburg, please indicate it. Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Merrill.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
President Frisbee.
Here. The roll call, we have an agenda in front of us. If there's any additions or changes or comments to it, this now is the time to do it. I do have one that I think we shall add to ten D in regards to the village managers compensation.
Staff has one as well to add. And that would be under eleven B boy on the social district in that point Alex Lee will handle for staff.
Other changes or comments? Hearing none. Have anyone that would make motion to approve the agenda as modified?
As in in Frisbee, trustee Wagner will make the motion as amended.
Trustee Wagner motions. Trustee Keller support.
Roll call vote. Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yeah.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. So we have an agenda for the evening. Jim, no scheduled appearances. No public officials. Is there anyone on the line that you would recognize as an official?
Um, I believe Art's on the line, but if he he's involved with the resolutions from Kalamazoo County on the council action items. If a council member had a question or that he graciously gave his time and is here. We have three others. Two other citizens and the chief just popped in, so I'll bring him in on the panelist group. If anyone does desire to to speak, it appears everyone's on a computer. You just move your cursor on at the bottom, there is a raised hand symbol and you would just go ahead and click on that raised hand. If you are on a phone, you would hit star nine to raise your hand. Give a few seconds. Believe everyone on.
Yeah, I think we rolled from public appearances to citizens comments. So
Oh, I'm sorry.
This no, yeah, this would be a time for citizens to comment on agenda items and non agenda items.
And again, if you want to move your cursor on your computer and at the bottom of the screen will be a raised hand icon you can hit, or if you're on a phone, star nine will indicate a raised hand. We'll go ahead and call on you. As of right now, Mr. Frisbee, I do not see anyone who's elected to raise their hand.
All right, then we shall move on to approval of the general consent agenda. Has everyone has had an opportunity to review in minutes? We have warrant reports, event requests, no correspondence for the evening. Is there any comments or questions or clarifications on the consent agenda? We hear none. Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Trustee Reaster so moved.
Trustee Olson, second.
Trustee Reaster makes the motion to approve the consent agenda supported by trustee Olson. Roll call vote trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yeah.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Next on the agenda, action items of the council tonight, the first one, resolution zero six two eight two zero two one dash zero two Kalamazoo County Resolution. Approval of amendment one Waste Not C and the Recycling Center to the Kalamazoo County Solid Waste Management Plan. I don't know if anyone's had a good opportunity to review this. I've been following it pretty close just from emails that they've they update any interested party on. This is going on for, I think, into the second year. They're finally at this stage where they're trying to implement the plan. Looks like it was voted unanimously by the Kalamazoo County Commission in support of the resolution. Is there any comments or questions or inquiry? I think the village manager Mallory said there was an individual on the line from the business unit or the
Correct. And I don't know if Art wants to speak on it. It is both resolutions receive staff support and I'm going to go ahead if you're okay with it, Mr. Frisbee, to allow Art to speak.
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Art.
Can can you can can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, my name is Art Mulder. Mulder's Landscapes Supplies and Waste Not Recycling. We it is correct. We have been working on this project. It's about to probably pretty close to thirty months now. We started in April of two thousand and nineteen. We're looking to get permitted a C and D, which is construction and demolition recycling facility on the corner of Nichols and Ravine Road. It's been unanimously approved by the Kalamazoo Township. The site plan has been, it's gone through the commission. The Kalamazoo County Commissioners and now it needs to go to all twenty four municipalities in the county. So far, we have gone through thirteen of them and we have thirteen unanimous approvals of the amendment number one. And we're asking the same from you. And if you have questions about the the procedure, or if you have questions about the actual facility itself, I'm here to answer any questions. I appreciate Jim Mallory calling me a couple of times and making sure we're on the agenda and I appreciate that very much. So I wanted to speak to that.
Any other council members have questions or inquiry on this for Mr. Art?
Sure, I'll I'll take one stab. This is trustee Wagner. The only thing I couldn't really find clarified in the provided documents are what are the existing infrastructure that's already in place to our region for the C and D disposal?
Currently, there is no C and D recycling. The closest one is over ninety miles away. There's one up in Calcasas and then over on the other side of the state. So there's nothing as far as C and D recycling anywhere close to where we're doing it. So that's why the it's important. We wanted it in Kalamazoo County. It's been a real journey to get here. But we felt strongly, we wanted to keep it in Kalamazoo County, wanted to to support the local community. So that's why we worked so hard to get it here.
This is trustee trustee Reaster and I I'm all for any kind of recycling that we can do to prevent all of this, all of these things going into our landfills. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, just just a little background, not to interrupt anybody, but so basically you see a lot of construction sites. I've actually been in contact with Frederick's Construction on your big project down in the village of Vicksburg. And as soon as we get up and running, they they it'll be towards the end of their project, but they're planning on using us for that. But we would take roll off boxes off every construction site. And we would be able to recycle about seventy five percent of what comes into that. So anytime they build a home, they're remodeling or anything like that, about seventy five percent of that can all be recycled. And currently, nobody is doing that. So that's the the reason for us to take a step in faith and and move forward to this project.
Art, this is trustee Olson. I know that there's been some concern about noise, dust, other things from the local neighbors over there, especially the Lang family. What can you tell us about how you guys are going to address that?
Yeah, everything we do is in a totally enclosed building. Nothing will be outside. So everything is enclosed and you know, the the noise, the dust, that'll all be controlled. If needed, there's a decimal reading that will still stay well with under that. And so we feel strongly, so does the township, that we will be in complete compliance with everything that needs to be happening there. So.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Art, if you could just briefly give an overview of what type of materials you remove from the landfill and recycle just for others that that may watch this on down the road.
Sure. Yep. So we would start out with the wood, you know, a lot of scrap wood and stuff gets in those roll off boxes. That can all be recycled, all the what they call OCC. For the common folk, for me, that's cardboard. That can be recycled. There's metal in those bins that can all be recycled. There's concrete asphalt and all that stuff can be recycled and reused on other at other places. So like the wood, we're planning on bringing that to a cogeneration plant by Cadillac or turn it into mulch. The metal obviously gets recycled at the metal places. The concrete gets recycled and turned into crushed concrete to be sold as aggregate under base.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments while we have Art on the line?
Trustee Holmes, one question. Art, you mentioned the first amendment. I believe you said was voted on thirteen times and all thirteen gave it an approval. What was the second amendment, the votes on the second amendment?
Um, I I believe, don't quote me because we're not watching that, obviously, as close as we are the first one. They've all been unanimous since some of the municipalities have not noticed there's two amendments. So um, so you know, I yeah, I don't, they've all been unanimous whenever they've been voted on as well. We just don't know how many what their scorecard is. We know what our scorecard is and we're very proud of that, but I don't know what their scorecard is. But anytime it does get brought up, it does get passed unanimously as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mulder, can you explain a little bit more on amendment two? I know we're not there yet, but while we have you on the phone.
No, I really have no idea what what best way disposals plans are. I really have no idea. They haven't shown any site plans or anything like that.
Right, okay.
Well, in recognition of that, Mr. Frisbee, should this council be voting on something if we don't have the complete plans for?
Well, yeah, for a little clarification, because
Your your agenda topic is on the mo on resolution number one. And the the comments should be limited to that resolution at this time. There isn't a motion on the floor on resolution one. But that is the agenda item topic conversation. Once we move off this agenda, we will move to the next action item.
All right, thanks for the clarification. Now, I I thought Mr. Mulder was involved with amendment two, so come to the chase, but I thank you, Art. I appreciate it. Are there other questions in regard to amendment? One that's in front of us tonight? No, all right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Mulder for joining us.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. If you care to drop off, you're more than welcome, but or if you care to listen in, that's your choice. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Art.
So we have a a staff recommendation and in the request on the table to approve resolution zero six two eight two zero two one dash zero two for amendment one. I would ask what the council's desires are.
Trustee Wagner will support.
Trustee Keller moves to support and approve the resolution as submitted and supported by trustee Wagner. Roll call vote trustee Keller.
Yeah.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion to support unanimously.
So your second item is zero six twenty eight dash or twenty twenty one dash three, the Kalamazoo County Resolution for the Approval Amendment to Miller Road Transfer Station to the Kalamazoo County Solid Waste Management Plan. And personally, I got a little confused on this one. I haven't I wasn't as educated as I was in what they were planning to do with the C and D materials. So Jim, you have some clarification or what the request is?
The the request, it's part of the procedural requirement that to be placed within the Kalamazoo County Plan, it's going to require at least sixty seven percent or over two thirds of the municipalities within the county to support and approve this moving forward. It will then be forwarded to the state of Michigan where ultimately it will be reviewed and approved by the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, at which point then it'll move forward. But to adopt it within the county government, which the county commissioners voted unanimously to support this. I I am not sure on what the count is up to in front of the municipalities within the county. But as Art did say, this amendment as well has received support from each and every one that had it had its on agenda, had it on the agenda for their local governance to support. It is staff's recommendation that this is supported. And Vicksburg is part of the will will ultimately be more than sixty seven percent of municipalities that then this will be adopted into the Kalamazoo Plan and forwarded to Eagle with the state of Michigan.
Yeah, mine just not clear exactly what it is. What are they? What are we? What are they asking for? What is what is the Miller Road Transfer Station? What is that?
Can I help with this a little bit?
Yes, please.
From what I'm gathering, we're not going to sit site plan. Somebody mentioned that. We're not involved in that process. The state's going to be, but what I'm taking, Jim, if I'm wrong, these would be basically two competing companies. That because the gentleman just announced that he has no idea if that's the disposal or proposing. So it sounds like they've got their transfer station situation for recycling and and this gentleman has their, Mulder's has their setup for recycling. Am I am I correct in that?
You are correct in that. I and and it's two separate plans, two separate businesses. What's in front of the council is to support the county's commission to adopt this amendment within the Kalamazoo County Solid Waste Plan. That's what's in front of this council. It's not to prove what's going on in Miller Road. It's it will be part of the plan. The county governance government will have the governance over it, working with the state of Michigan.
Okay, so I still not totally clear that the first amendment that we voted on and then the second amendment, are these two companies going to be doing the same thing?
No, these are amendments to the Kalamazoo County Solid Waste Management Plan, a plan that the county had developed. Within that plan, before they can formally place it in the county's plan, they need at least sixty seven percent of the municipalities in the county to support it.
Okay, thank you.
So they're looking for support from the county, local, the local governments within this county to be able to place this amendment in the county plan, which will then get forwarded with state oversight in the county to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm following it a little bit better myself on that, Jim. Thank you.
Yeah, trustee Keller here, the biggest problem was we didn't have a representative from best way disposal here, as we did Mulder's. And we didn't, we didn't get any background information like we did from from Waste Not C and D Recycling. So that's why it it looks ambiguous, but it's a formality more than
Yeah, that's what it sounds like. It's just a formality. Yeah.
Any any further comments or discussion? With that, we've got a request to approve amendment in front of us. What's the council's desire?
Trustee Olson, I I request that the village council stand behind resolution zero six two eight two oh two one dash oh three Kalamazoo County Resolution for the Approval Amendment Number Two Miller Road Transfer Station to the Kalamazoo County Solid Waste Plan.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Rusty Reaster, a second.
We have a motion by trustee Olson, supported by trustee Reaster. Roll call vote trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yeah.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Okay, support for the resolution passes.
So on to ten, excuse me, Jim?
No, while I was just on under ten C is where you'll need to we'll enter, we'll move into the public hearing for the budget. Receive any comments that so people without the call will have the opportunity once the public hearing, if they have a comment to make it. And then we'll close the public hearing. And then consider the adoption of the twenty one twenty two operating budget.
But so we'll need a we'll need a motion by a trustee to open. We need to
Trustee Keller, move the wheel to public hearing.
Trustee Wagner, support.
Trustee Keller makes a motion supported by trustee Wagner to move into the public, open the public hearing. Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yeah.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
And we would consider the public hearing open.
That means if we have any members of the public on the line that would like to speak and make comments to the proposed budget, we will entertain that at this time.
We do have a couple's citizens on the call. Again, if you move the cursor over your screen, you'll see the raised hand symbol down below. Go ahead and click on that. If we do see a raised hand, I'll let President Frisbee know. If you're on the phone, it would be a star nine would give us indication you'd want to speak. So we'll If you're on the phone, it would be a star nine would give us indication you'd want to speak. So we'll give it a few seconds. Believe both individuals. Have spoke before, so I know confident they know to hit the button, give it a few seconds. I do not see anyone, Mr. Frisbee, that has indicated they wish to speak to the council and the staff's recommendation. That you could close the public hearing and move back to your. I will inform the council, we did not receive, this was publicly noticed. Two Thursdays ago, I believe, we have not received inquiries at Village Hall or any written communication either.
Very good. Mr. Keller, do I need to have a motion to close our meeting or do I have the authority? I would entertain a motion. To move the public hearing.
Move.
Motion made by trustee Keller.
Reported by trustee Reaster.
And the motion made by trustee Keller to move out of the public hearing supported by trustee Reaster. Roll call vote would be trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster. Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
So we have a twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two operating budget. In front of us. Um. And thank you, I I think I should probably make the statement now for anybody watching this in the future that wonders how quickly that happened. If they had been involved in once the last four weeks, the last four meetings. They would understand what we have gone through in the discussion and debate we've had involved in this, so. It's something that we were well prepared to make a decision on tonight ahead of this vote, so. Thank you all for your your time, you know, and your effort and the staff's dedication to this. Um. Yeah. Ten D, we added to.
Hold on, hold on, we, we got it, we have to present the budget. And then we'll under ten C look for after. I will have a few comments, our recommendation. And some highlights of the budget, then if the council desires, we'd entertain the motion support on the adoption of the budget before moving to. Ten D.
Okay.
Oh, I just crossed off the approval. That was the public hearing. Whoops.
Whoops, yeah.
Okay, um. On on the budget, what we have in front of us is presentation, the twenty one twenty two original budget. Also have a column of the twenty twenty one amended budget and that amendments went through June eighteenth. We also have what was the finalized. Amount of money in at the nineteen twenty fiscal year. The COVID nineteen situation presented the village of Vicksburg with significant challenges in the twenty twenty one fiscal year. These challenges included unknown factors such as when the economy will return to normal. When the village's workforce will return to a normal work schedules and when the village events will return to what. In historically would be deemed normal. We're proud to report that the village of Vicksburg is entering the twenty one twenty two fiscal year and a sound financial position. Due to actions within the twenty twenty one fiscal year. The twenty one twenty two fiscal year budget remains committed to a fiscally conservative strategy which is committed. To deliver in the high level of customer service to our citizens and visitors. An emphasis on providing a safe community while recognizing the value of a vibrant downtown business community. Parks and Recreation, non-motorized means of travel. And plans appropriate levels of assigned and committed dollars for cute future capital improvement purchases and projects. The village of Vicksburg operates a set of financial controls that are established by the state law. And detailed in the village ordinance, all local governments are required to prepare and administer an annual balanced budget. How well the village has performed in administering the budget is then reviewed at the end of the fiscal year by an independent auditor. The village has a track record of excellence in budgeting and financial management since two thousand sixteen. Vicksburg has repeated repeatedly received from outside independent auditors for our fiscal responsibility. Throughout the past four years, high marks on how we've been able to assign and commit money. Like any good business, we like to develop a detailed plan in order to maintain a fiscally sound and stable village. It continues to be the philosophy to not incur any general fund tax debt and to pay for capital items with cash. Via a sound financial savings plan. The village budget has two main components, the general fund and non-general fund. In order to fully understand how the village finances its projects and programs, it's important to know the difference. The general fund, these are taxpayer dollars are deposited in the general fund. Along with state shared revenue from sales and use taxes, franchise fees, business license fees, interest income. And miscellaneous revenues and beginning cash balances. This portion of the budget is comprised largely of discretionary funds. Since the village council and village manager can allocate the funds to programs and services in any areas. In other words, there are few restrictions on how these resources may be allocated. General fund dollars are used to support such village services as police, fire and parks and recreation. As well as planning, community development and administrative support services. All other funds often referred to as dedicated funds. The non-discretionary funds include enterprise enterprise funds such as wastewater. And water rates, Angels Crossing Golf Course, grants, donations, contract revenues and other revenues specifically dedicated. For a particular purpose. Other specifically dedicated revenues would be the major and local road money. Which we receive from the state of Michigan, commonly referred to as Act fifty one dollars. Downtown Development Authority tax dollars and Brownfield Development. The revenue received in these departments are restricted to only be used for the purposes outlined in the state of Michigan statutes. For each arbitrary fund. The budget process. In accordance with the village charter and ordinances, the village manager shall prepare and submit to the council prior to July first of each calendar year. A recommended budget including the following information. Detailed estimates with a supporting explanations of all proposed expenditures for each department, office. And agency or subunit of the village showing the expect expenditures for the corresponding items. For the last preceding fiscal year in full and for the current fiscal year to June. Eighteenth twenty twenty one and estimated expenditures for the balance of the current fiscal year. These will be promoted, presented later in this meeting as fourth quarter amendments. Detailed estimates of all anticipated revenues of the village from sources other than taxes with a comparative statement of the amounts received by the village. From each of the same or similar sources for the last preceding fiscal year in full. And for the current fiscal year to March first and estimated revenues for the balance of the current fiscal year. And again, those will be presented in the fourth quarter amendments. Any supporting information as the council may request. The next step in the budget process is to place the recommended budget on file for public review and set the date required for the public hearing which was set. For the third village council meeting in June, Monday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. The council may then choose to adopt the budget at the same meeting following the public hearing in accordance with the village charter budget. However. The budget must be approved by the village council no later than the last day in June. The village of Vicksburg publishes within six months of the close of each fiscal year, a complete set of financial statement. Presented in conformity with the generally accepted accounting principles. And audited in accordance with the generally accepted auditing standards by a firm of a licensed certified public accountant. The results of the financial audit are presented at the village council meeting in January each year. Would like to take some time to highlight contained within the budget for proposed budget. For the twenty one twenty two fiscal year. Total general fund revenues are estimated to be just over one point six million dollars. And associated expenditures at just under one point four million. Committed to the financial transparency with the continuation of the Vicksburg Financial Transparency Data on our website. A community calendar will be utilized within the fiscal year and we will return to live streaming all government meetings. Once we return to meeting in person, beginning with the September twenty twenty one village council meeting to be held at the historic village pavilion. The completion of the first major infrastructure improvement in Vicksburg in over thirty years. Planning for the eleven and a half million dollar project began in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen fiscal year. The USDA loan was approved in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen fiscal year. Construction began in the twenty twenty one fiscal year and we're proud to report it will be completed. Within the twenty one twenty two fiscal year. The completion of. One million dollars in a new modern streetscape to the downtown area. The sidewalks will be widened over fifteen feet to a left to allow for cafe seating. A one-way southbound on Main Street between Prairie and Washington Streets. And all new accessories, benches, tables, trash and recycle receptacles. Repainting of all streetlights and the creation of very unique. Crosswalks to downtown. An investment of over two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in repaving roadways within the village of Vicksburg. One hundred and thirty three thousand three hundred dollars committed to Parks and Recreation Department, including construction of three new pickleball courts. Repainting multiple buildings in the historic village, creating a mural, yeah, art mural. At the recreational park which highlights the village of Vicksburg, new consistent park. And Park Rule Signs and Sunset Beach and Clark Park. And the movement of Veterans Park to a specific location within the historic village. Initiating a capital fundraising campaign of two hundred and twenty five thousand for the complete makeover of Oswald Park. To fit the new street state cop, streetscape concept in downtown. A twenty five thousand dollar commitment to engineering services for this project. Utilizing previously fundraised dollars to ensure the project is ready for public bid in September twenty twenty one. The completion of a non-motorized trail on the south side of Highway Street. W Avenue from the west village limit to the existing asphalt trail just east of Angels Crossing. A sixty thousand dollar project. An overall slight increase in pension contributions is required and budgeted contribution to the employees retirement system. In most department funds. The village moved to from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan in two thousand eighteen. That has positively impacted the twenty one twenty two fiscal year by reducing liabilities in the amount of forty six thousand. Seven hundred and ninety two dollars. Future yearly anticipated liabilities will be reduced in excess of two hundred thousand dollars and will. Come close to eliminating all future liabilities in twenty thirty six. Following an independent base wage study by the M M L competitive salary and benefit structure for village of Vicksburg employees. Continuation of goose roundup and egg collection programs associated with Sunset Lake. Continuation of a fully staffed twenty four hour, seven day a week police department focused on delivering while service based on procedural justice mindset. This will include a new youth reading initiative in partnership with the Vicksburg District Library. Continuation of the school resource officer in partnership with the Vicksburg Community Schools. Construction of a new six thousand square foot pole barn building for D P W, which will ensure all D P W equipment can be stored inside and. There is proper storage of road salt throughout the winter months. Purchase of a new twenty twenty two pickup truck for D P W. Purchase of a new John Deere tractor to ensure snow is removed efficiently in the new downtown streetscape area. The addition of a fifth full-time position within D P W. A plan to meet the lead waterline replacement five percent per year, which is a state of Michigan legislative expectation. Creating a public-private partnership with downtown building orders to install water supply lines dedicated to fire suppression system and to downtown buildings. Partnership would provide between twenty and sixty percent funding from the village of expert financial resources. And a focus. On twenty twenty two festival opportunities. And the celebration of one hundred and fifty years as a general law village in the state of Michigan. It is staff's recommendation. That the resolution zero six two eight two zero two one dash one. Is approved and I can read that resolution. I'll pause here for any questions prior to reading it. Mr. Frisbee, if you're okay, I'll go ahead and read resolution zero six two eight two zero two one dash one.
Please do, sir.
Whereas the village council has reviewed requests for funding the necessary projects and programs of the village for the twenty one twenty twenty one. Dash twenty twenty two. And whereas it is determined the following activity level budget action plan. For the and will update that twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Should be adopted and whereas the village of Vicksburg tax levy for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. To support the operating budget includes a property tax rate that will remain at fifteen point one six three mils. And whereas the SAW grant has been completed with extensive evaluation of the village of Vicksburg infrastructure system and as a result. The twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two consumption rates will have a slight increase based on the recommendation. Of our financial team and the company Baker Tilly, which oversees. Our rate structure, the slight increases needed to ensure that there is enough revenue. To cover anticipated maintenance and upgrades to an aging system that dates to the nineteen forties. And whereas the state of Michigan has enacted. Legislation requiring municipalities to upgrade any lead water service line, the village estimates that there are four hundred and fifty to four hundred and seventy five locations that were required to be upgraded over the next twenty years. The state mandates that at minimum five percent of the water lines are replaced per year for the next twenty years. And whereas the cost of treatment of wastewater has increased ten percent in twenty twenty one. And whereas the average homeowner, the slight increase sewer at three percent and water at seven percent will we. Will equate on average to an increase of a dollar fifty seven per month for sewer and an increase of one dollar and fifty one cents. Per month for water. And whereas this will continue to ensure that the village of Vicksburg will be able to provide adequate capacity and infrastructure to our residents. Businesses and visitors in future years. The following list illustrates quarterly utility rates utilized in the budget, those rates are. In the documents to the council and will be on the documents. On our website, continuing on page two, whereas the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two activity level budget will continue a conservative fiscal approach. That utilizes previous assigned and committed dollars for C I P investments. The twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two activity level budget will be reviewed and updated at a public village council meeting every three months beginning in October twenty twenty one. And where has the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two activity level budget supports the village of Vicksburg's master plan, Parks and Recreation Plan, Downtown Development Plan. Current village council presidents and trustees, subunits of government and citizens input via five public Zoom meetings that over sixty citizens participated in. In that and now therefore be it resolved by the village council, the village of Vicksburg. That the attached activity level budget by department be adopted for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Fiscal year which lists the general fund, major street fund, local street fund, department of public works, downtown development authority, brownfield. Redevelopment Authority, Angels Crossing Golf Course, Sewer Fund and Water Fund. And be it further result, resolved. That a duly notice public hearing was held on the adoption of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two operating activity level budget. At seven P M, Monday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Pursuant to the executive orders from the governor of the state of Michigan and legislative action that allowed the village. Of expert council to declare a local emergency through August of twenty twenty one. And therefore it will be held electronically due to presence of coronavirus in the community. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just don't ask him to read that over.
Thank you.
He did really well.
I apologize from taking away from that, Jim. I mean, that that is really, really good stuff what you've put together. And your team has put together. And you know, just for all of us math geeks, we'll see that. We're not spending more than that we're bringing in, so kudos with that for that budget. Are there any questions of staff or further discussions and comments?
Uh, just one comment.
Uh, just one comment. Uh, to Jim, the recommendations from Baker Tilly. So I know that we're kind of taking the conservative route with looking at the uh three and seven percent increases on the respective funds. Um, do you think or in your estimation, uh, what kind of timeframe this is expected to cover? Because I know that this is. You know, a current time estimate to not increase future costs. Um, but how often do you think they're going to be looking at this? Is it going to be reevaluated annually for potential changes to rates?
It it needs to be evaluated annually going into each bed budget presentation. It's anticipated uh that rates would increase, and I believe uh into the future minimum here. The man's cost of living, um, but in the two to three percent each year. There's varying factors, uh, growth of the village impacts those. That's why they study it each year. Consumption as well as we get further into plans of future development that might become clearer to us. Um, but the short answer is every every year and that analysis usually begins in November. And and goes until we receive a letter uh in May that we request.
Thank you.
I will advise the council, one of the um. Impacts we we are scheduled to receive some federal money uh right now. The guidelines will will become a lot clearer after July sixth. But in a generic sense, it appears that infrastructure, uh, water and sewer operations as well as possible broadband. Can those funds can be used for so so we're going to certainly look at the requirements to replace lead lines. And the availability of that federal money in that area and do everything we can to ensure. That any type of rate increases are are kept to the lowest possible possible level. It's um, it's something I know we discussed quite a bit. Uh, the reality is I, you know, I equate it to um. You're you're the board of directors and we're operating a business and the cost to operate businesses across the board. No different than anyone who operates a construction business. Um, you know, whether it's cost of materials, all the factors that go involved in building a home. Um, same way as operating a water and sewer system, we we have to keep pace to be able to. To operate that effectively, but I'll ask any questions. You probably heard too, I'm babysitting my grand dog, so.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, and uh, that's just, I wanted to make sure we brought that up because I know that it's been talked about for the last several years that I've attended meetings that. I mean, one thing that we're expecting without fail is cost of living increases on expenses like this, and that's something we really can't get around. Not to speak about unexpected repairs and things like that that increase the expense.
Hey Jim, it's Rick. Um. Good information and thanks for the concisive umness of the detail of the information. The just one thought in realizing the. As as trustee Wagner pointed out, the number of times we've talked about water and sewer rates over the last few years. Um, to the degree that it's possible when the next bills are sent out, if. Some of the information that's in here that explains the increases that we have, that that may be helpful to those in the community to understand. Um, why we're seeking these modest rate increases.
Uh, it's an excellent suggestion. We'll put a second cover letter in with you invoice uh and I'll present that draft. Um, trying to think the timing, it it might be a draft at the July council meeting, or it might be a copy that got sent out. Um, and I will uh, but I will distribute via blind copy on email to each of you, a copy of that uh cover letter.
Great suggestion, Rick.
Thank you. You know, not everybody's going to understand that. Been imposed on us from the city of Kama Zoo, ten percent increase in sewer. And that's that's an area that I I constantly am clarifying with residents, you know, the water versus the sewer cost, so. You know, we all know the water is was very inexpensive for us. It's that uh is is the big. The big deduct on our on our our purse strings, you know, at home when we when we run our own finances. So we're all impacted by this. And yes, there was a lot of lively discussion around uh with Baker Tilly. And and how do we uh and I'll say that they were they were recommending more. Uh, but you know, we came to a an agreement that, you know, this is going to cover our known cost. Uh, it's not looking into the future at all. So every year, as Jim said, we're going to have to revisit this. Reevaluate it to what kind of expenses we had in the previous year, what expenses are coming ahead of us. So I think this is a pretty. And uh, discussed monetary increase, so.
Yeah, and I like uh trustee Holmes is um suggesting on the letter and probably uh. We had the Baker Tilly letter up there. I'll probably just make it a two-sided copy. One side being the cover letter from from myself with the other side being the letter from Baker Tilly as well, that people know this was analyzed pretty thoroughly.
That idea. And just just to add into, I mean, residents need to understand that. You know, the rates went up the way they went up because previous councils. Kick the can down the road when it came to rates. They they didn't do rate increases for years. And you know, so we're we're paying the piper now for that unfortunately. We're just trying to make sure that they have to get. So I mean, nobody likes to have an increase, but you know, this is the fact of life. I mean, you know. Xfinity raises cable, you know, twenty bucks a month and fifteen bucks a month and everybody. Oh, it's another fifteen bucks a month, no big deal. I'm not saying a couple bucks a month isn't a big deal on water and sewer, but you really need to have water in your home and. So when we have residency to understand that we can't go back to the way we used to do.
That's a good point. Good point, Carl.
Yeah, I I believe we were paying for the water increases we were incurring for years through the general fund, so. At least we know it's all transparent. It's right in front. We know when we share with all the residents what the impact is to us. And why the justification for it, but very good idea. I I know Mister Mallory will take heed in that and put out a. A letter trying to uh explain to the residents. Thank you. Thank you for that, Rick and Carl.
Yeah, and if if the councils are in agreement with it, I'll I'll work with the uh financial committee. On the draft letter, just to have their input before we do send it. Um. Like I said, I'm not sure. I think the schedule of billing our our next one might go out before the next council meeting, so. If they're okay, I'll just work with the subcommittee. And I did notice a Mister Frisby because certainly in my mind I had. Ten D or E with fourth quarter budget amendments, so we probably have to go with ten D, but I'd like to make a. Amendment to the agenda to ensure we have fourth quarter budget amendments, which I I we need a council approval to implement. And I can do that. I can do that under the village managers' report. Um, if if that works.
No, that works fine. But we have a uh, we have a budget in front of us. In a resolution zero six two eight two zero two one dash one resolution establishing our twenty twenty one. Operating budget. Is that? That's not right. Do you remember is it twenty twenty one twenty two operating?
Right, yes. Too many budgets. Yep, it's it'll be on there as the twenty twenty one twenty twenty two.
Right. So the staff is asking for approval of the budget. I'll ask the council for their, what is their pleasure?
Uh, trustee Holmes. Um, I move that we accept the twenty twenty one twenty twenty two budget as submitted.
Trustee Wagner, I'll support that motion.
Moved by trustee Holmes is supported by trustee Wagner.
Roll call vote. Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
President Frisby.
Yes.
I'll I'll conclude uh President Frisby on that note. Um, just uh, I believe all the councils aware, but to inform our public. That each of the projects contained in the budget, though the budget is approved, any project that's in excess of five thousand dollars would come back in front of the council. Once we go through the bid process for additional council input and approval before we begin that project. So it's pretty well scrutinized as as we go go through here.
Thank you. Just some clarity, clarity, if I may, the uh fourth quarter budget amendments will. We'll need a motion to approve those and uh, correct?
Yes, sir.
Just continue on that and make that.
Sure. We uh supplied the the council as the fourth quarter uh. Fourth quarter usually involves the enterprise funds be a golf. Water and sewer and the activity this year, especially with USDA loans and in in payments of loans. Uh, that's a a water sewer and storm infrastructure project. Uh, the storm involves our Act fifty one, two oh two and two oh three funds. So um, those are listed out in detail. Um, we did have some revenue as as the documents to the council uh demonstrate um uh penalties and interest. Uh, we had additional local stabilization money received by the state. Um, and franchise revenue, and it's our goal again in budget amendments. To to get as much information as we can into the budget to ensure that we uh sail through the audit process. The golf budget is through June twentieth of this year. So so um, we we believe that the and again, it's an enterprise, not to get into the weeds. But it is uh required by statute to go in front of the council before staff makes any of these movements. With the approval, what happens? And again, um, I guess more to educate the public. Is the commitment to the financial transfers uh transparency center. The council, if they approve these fourth quarter budget amendments, staff in the next two days will implement the uh amendments into the system. And within thirty days, it's going to be uploaded on the Financial Transparency Center for for viewing of everyone. Um, so and if anyone had any questions, they certainly can give me a call and I can get into the weeds, but I'll happy to answer any of the questions. You'll see multiple of the amendments on golf, sewer and water. We've put in an Excel spreadsheet, felt it was easier, conservative, and just made them uh the numbers in red that will implement it too. Those are actual numbers as of today.
I'd just like to say that I prefer that format in the Excel. It is definitely a lot more reader friendly, so thank you.
Yes.
It's good to see their um state revenue sharing was kind of going into this budget cycle of this past year of twenty. Twenty one that um, we were anticipating a much lower state revenue sharing, so it's good to see that. That wasn't affected as as bad as you and and had anticipated.
Uh, that's correct. I think uh, when we first prep the budget, we looked at a thirty or forty percent reduction. And when we finally things shook out in the fall, they came back, it would be maybe between a percent and two percent decrease. I think at the end of the fiscal year because. And again, it's getting into the weeds, but we'll get another payment for this fiscal year in August. Uh, we should be up actually a little bit, so uh kudos to the state of Michigan. Uh.
Yeah.
I just saw one uh, one budget line item that two zero two four six two zero seven zero zero one two. That's not the one. The the uh, dash two hundred, the capital outlay. I didn't I didn't realize we had a uh. An outlay designated for that process of the uh. Uh sewers and and water going in, so it's just found it interesting that we had a line item, budget line item for that.
Yeah, there's four hundred, I think, and some different line items within that bid that we put out, and that was one of them.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about the uh amendments? The staff is asking us to approve fourth quarter budget amendments. For the twenty 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 one budget.
Trustee Reaster, so moved.
Trustee Reaster makes motion to support.
Trustee's on support.
Trustee Holmes.
Sorry, trustee Olson.
I saw I saw you light up first, so.
So we have trustee Reaster uh motion to support uh the recommended fourth quarter budget amendment supported by trustee Olson. Roll call vote trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yeah.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Frisby.
Yes.
Thank you.
So fourth quarter budget amendments out of the way. So we'll drop down to uh ten E. One thing we we've neglected and uh. Obviously, we have to, we call it out separately, but I would like to uh propose that. We offer our village manager the same pay increase as was recommended for his staff at two point three percent. And uh, we will um, HR group will be getting a evaluation forms. Uh, to follow up on. As we are, we are bound to do that uh annually also. So if anyone is in agreement with that uh proposal, I would encourage a motion to do so.
Trustee Keller, so move.
Trustee Keller moves of support.
Trust trustee Frisby, could I just make a comment? Um, ju- just for the sake of those who may not know or or knew on council. Um, last year we didn't do this. My first year we did, we actually went into a closed session. Um, during a council meeting to have this discussion prior to voting on it. So I just wanted to share that with with Denny and Ryan. Um, that again, I'm not saying this time we would or wouldn't have done it, but I'm just saying my first year that. We we did have an opportunity as a group um to talk about this in a in a closed session before we came out and voted on it. So I just wanted to to share that in the event. Um, there are any questions or about it?
If if I if I can clarify that because it's 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 um. It it, the employee has to to waive. It's a conversation on on the evaluation that moved it to closed session. And that's that's the individual employee elects whether to keep it uh out of the public. Uh, meeting in a closed session. Um, and that that was my doing two years ago on the evaluation. To to have, to allow the council to have that conversation. Uh, but I asked that it take place in closed session, so but it was specific to the evaluation.
That's exactly. I I was just going to uh make that clarification.
We were also meeting in person. We were meeting in person two years ago. Last year we did not.
Right, and 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 it's twofold. Our obligation on one is an evaluation. It's separate from a discussion and obligation and merit increases. Right, so we shouldn't confuse it. It was closed session on the performance. What we.
We had a corner order. We had. I had a motion on the table. We needed a support and then we could have had discussion on it.
Thank you, Carl. There is a motion on there for, uh.
Trustee Holmes, support.
Motion by Keller, support by Holmes.
Trustee, uh, Keller makes a motion, if I captured it right, to support, uh, the village manager receiving 2.3% base pay increase equal to the staff and supported by trustee Holmes.
Correct.
If there are any further conversation.
Uh, just quick comment, uh, to follow up on what Rick had brought up. So, uh, President Frisbee, then will we be having a, um, the separate review like you mentioned with the HR committee to go over the initial performance review and then we'll deliver that at a later date?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
And that'll be, that'll be forthcoming in the next week. No further discussion. I would ask Mr. Mallory to do a roll call.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yeah.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Frisbee.
Yes. Motion carries. Yeah, it takes us to, um, manager report. I think you had an infrastructure update and a social district update.
Yeah, on the infrastructure side, obviously I believe everyone's aware. I mean, we got received six to seven inches of rain uh, since last Thursday that impacted a little bit. We, uh, and um, certainly again extend our appreciation for the citizens' patience, uh, Prairie Street and that, um, on the heaviest of rain. Thankfully it was, uh, nowhere near the east side of the state. Um, it even the best of systems with the, that amount of rainfall struggles to keep up. Um, but we are into the intersection of Prairie and Kalamazoo and continuing to move westbound. It's our goal at this point to move at minimum 100 feet a day, uh, on the sewer side of this project. Uh, down on Prairie Street. Uh, that road is, is, um, beginning to be prepped, uh, for, for, uh, to get its first coat of asphalt. And we'll be again sending out an update to our business community and other members and uh, on the email distribution list, uh, tomorrow we'll meet with the engineers and project manager of the contractors at, uh, 10 a.m. Be sure to put that update, uh, out, but we're moving forward and, uh, we hope for good weather to, to continue progress.
It seems to me, uh, driving around the village that people are, are doing okay. They seem to be figuring it out and, um, I haven't heard any real negative comments. So seems, it seems as though people are figuring it out. I figured out how to get to post office.
Yeah, the, and they, and that's what the engineers and, and the contractor, the contractor does this all throughout the Midwest said, it'll take a week. People will reestablish their habits and best routes and, and we're seeing that. So we definitely appreciate the public. And again, we'd highlight, uh, we're hoping that they, uh, patronize our downtown businesses during this time and, and understand that they're, they can get within a, a, a block walking distance of every single business downtown. And in most cases even closer than that.
Jim, it's Rick. Um, just a question, well, quick comment. Uh, first I hope Chief Sanderson is looking the other way regarding the one way behind the hideaway because everyone else is, as they're using it. Secondly, I just wanted to ask, it, did, um, the, the, the closure of the railroad crossing on W Avenue, did, did they convey that to the township and to the township? Is there any discussion? I'm just curious between, um, the governments, um, on this. I know sometimes these things are, are out of our hands, but I'm just curious because it does add another wrinkle to this, you know, moving people around.
We, we were communicated about, uh, the railroad crossings and, and specific cause, uh, they're on Boulevard. That railroad crossing, um, uh, right before it turns to Washington Street will be updated here within the next 30 days. I, I, uh, it would be an educated assumption that probably did have communication with the outlying townships as well, the railroad did because they notified us, but I don't have that specific information. I will say in the evaluation and knowing that that does add a wrinkle inside the village, once they begin that crossing. But if we, uh, would ask them to lay the, the improvement of those crossings, then you get back on their flight pattern and would know when it's completed. So, so he as a staff said, no, we want that crossing done.
Okay. So I'm asking, is W Avenue crossing closed?
Yes.
I have not been traveling that because I didn't like going over those tracks. Okay. So that, that is now close to us. We cannot go over that.
Correct. And I think the next one's going to be Portage Road south of W.
Okay.
Unfortunately, just everybody's aware, the railroad will do what the railroad wants to do.
Exactly.
They, they don't. They don't, they don't, they'll, they'll inform the municipalities, but if they're going to fix a crossing, they're going to do it.
They march to their own drummer.
Now, I will, I will let the council know that the council, that the crossing within the village uh, had, uses no village money to fix it. It was, we submitted a grant where the railroad pays 60% and the state pays 40% of that bill.
Oh, okay. So, so Boulevard is going to be fixed.
Yes.
I'm getting happier by the minute.
Well, the residents also need to understand that, that W Avenue is not part of our project. It was not part of the, just so the residents understand that we didn't decide to, well, we'll close that off too. That's not what this was about. So trust me, because that was the only, that was the only smooth road I had to travel to go west out of here from where I'm at. So it's gotten harder.
Yeah, it's a good point, Carl. And I'm, I'm somewhat concerned if the, the tracks there where it turns into Washington on, on Mill. If we close that right in the middle of our infrastructure plan, I don't know if there's anything we can communicate with them to try to put that off till the end of the summer, because that could create quite a mess. It, it'll push people down to Prairie, which is being.
No, you can still go, you can still go, I go south, south Michigan to, um, Washington and then turn on Mill Street and you can get through.
Yeah, no, within the two projects, um, it'll be the same thing. There'll be multiple signs that are going up and then it will take a week for people to figure out the railroad crossing is a two, two to three week project for them to complete.
Jim, just to confirm, so there will be a path from the Centennial Trillium Prairie's neighborhoods into downtown from, from the Northwest?
Yes.
Maybe.
Washington's really busy. Myself to say, go around to Sprinkle Road, then I'd start getting them up now.
You have an.
We're going to put a ferry service in at the, the bow launchers, Sunset Park and we'll ferry you across.
You know, I think we could start a sitcom with, uh, sewer and, uh, train and something else. Oh my.
No. Don't go there, Ryan.
I love our village. I wouldn't trade it for anything.
That's right.
Well, I appreciate.
Here from Alex. Let's hear from Alex. I want to hear about the social district.
I know, I know the property owners, they, even though they're frustrated, they do appreciate the communication that the staff is doing. So thank you for that, being proactive and, and communication. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And, uh, prompted by trustee Reister, uh, Mr. Alex Lee can have the floor.
Thank you, Jim. President Frisbee, members of the council, when we opened our social district, uh, we did a soft opening, knowing that the construction through downtown would result in a temporary suspension at some point. We use temporary border marking signage and cup disposal receptacles. And we approached this time as basically a test run. And our social district has been a resounding success, but it's now my belief that for the safety of residents and guests, it is time to implement a plan for the temporary suspension of our social district. And my reasoning is this, construction has moved into the downtown area. Workers and equipment can create and do create a risky environment. The holes required do this work are an obvious hazard. Our streetlights have now been removed and in addition to darkness issues, there are wires and base parts that cause tripping hazards even with fully adequate lighting. Also with the removal of light posts, many of our required boundary signs have been removed. And cosmetically our temporary cup disposal receptacles are one good rain away from becoming soup. Um, I notified our bar owners, the temporary social district suspension discussion last week. Although there is obviously some disappointment in temporarily suspending this successful venture, no one is promoting business over safety. With approval, I would anticipate that we give a short notice and information period going into the temporary suspension. And it should be noted that the existing outdoor seating would remain in place and outside until the sidewalk removal begins. We're just talking about people being mobile with the social district cup. What we're asking is the council to approve the temporary suspension and delegate to staff the timing of both the suspension and the reopening, when it is safe to do so. I'll answer any questions.
It absolutely makes sense to me. I certainly think that it could be a accident waiting to happen if we had people walking. I, I, I know that I wouldn't want to try to walk through there right now. So I think it makes a lot of sense.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Lee?
So, Mr. Lee, to clarify, what would be expected or asked of the council for the permissions and abilities to uh, revoke temporarily the social district and then reenact it? Uh, what would that, that conversation or the chain of command look like?
Um, I didn't hear all of the question, Mr. Wagner, but I, I think I have heard enough. Any change or suspension of the hours, um, with our charter, the state for the social district, uh, require council approval, uh, you can delegate to staff the timing, uh, of those changes.
If I, if I can add on that, uh, trustee Wagner, we, we're going into a period where we only have one council meeting in July, August and September. So what we're looking for tonight is a motion that will delegate that authority to staff. At, and then, uh, wh- when we anticipate we'd be given a three or four week long notice to the bar owners and community that the social district would be suspended on this date. And it will continue to evaluate as a progress goes through downtown. And if by chance we felt that we could safely open the social district, uh, we would make the reverse announcement in the date that it would reopen. Um, again, predictably those dates is between now and really the first Monday in October. Uh, just gives more flexibility, uh, versus calling a special council meeting. So we reviewed it with, uh, Andrew Horn. And he said, uh, that if the council delegated the authority to staff, we would meet the, the state requirement.
It's Jim.
Sure. I, I think that clarifies it well.
It's good.
If, Jim, is there any guess at all on when they think the downtown will be somewhat back to normal where you could legitimately try to open it back up? I mean, just a guess. Talk about October or?
Yeah, it, it ended September to the middle of October. I, I, I wouldn't, I would say getting the downtown back in order. I, um, I'll let the construction and, and Alex Lee's judgment uh, on, on opening up the social district. If it occurred before, I trust Alex and he's in tune with the business owners as well as the construction team, but, but I would look at that timeframe.
Well, my main point was we're not looking to the end of the year, that's, uh, you know, December. So I mean, it's.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm, I'm very hopeful and grateful that that does not happen.
Just wanted to clarify as well. So for the, the delegation, would it be an indefinite delegation or just for the duration of this project?
Duration project?
Yeah, it would be just due to, we would, if this project wasn't going on, the social district would continue. So it's just to, uh, for the safety while this project is downtown. There, there, to Carl's question, there could be a time that the rough asphalt all gets put in on Prairie and Main Street and the construction has continued eastbound on Washington. And Alex could very well recommend, hey, it's now an environment that is safe, may, to reopen, um, tough playing hypotheticals, I, you know, um.
I, I, if I may, I will say that it is in our purvey to make those decisions to open or close. And if we so wish that you'd want to maintain that authority when to open, that we just close the social district now, and then when we'll take advice from staff, when to open it back up.
Yeah, I would, would use the word suspension. Just so we, once we notify the state, all we're doing is suspending it. We're going to have the social district again when we can safely operate it.
Yeah, Tim, and I think that's a little more closely into the vein of what I was trying to get at is if it would be a, a permanent delegation to staff for that authority, or if it was just, uh, for the duration of this, which I think you've well clarified. So thank you all.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that we retain that, the authority afterwards.
I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Jim? Jim, just from a business sta- standpoint, I think Vickers Landing and Main Street Pub really won't be impacted by this construction, but the, the other three that are, it's due to construction and I agree with this move. So till the construction's over and it's safe again, uh, s- suspend it and then bring it back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Ryan, if, if you'd like to word it and make a.
Uh, yeah. So President Frisbee, I make a motion that the village council supports the temporary delegation of the authority to suspend and reenact the social district to the village management and staff.
Trustee Reister, support.
Okay, uh, motion, uh, by trustee Wagner, supported by trustee Reister to grant temporary authority to village staff to determine when to suspend the social district and then when to reopen it within, when safe to do so in this infrastructure project. Here are no other questions or conversation. Uh, roll call vote trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
That, that concludes, uh, the village manager's report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. This goes to, um, trustee time. I'll start with Mr. Olson. Trustee Olson.
Believe it or not, I'm good.
Trustee Reister.
I think I am too. I just, I would just like to, to thank Jim and his staff for, um, putting all this paperwork together. I know it takes a long time and I found it easy to read and easy to understand. So thank you.
Trustee Holmes.
Um, ditto Jim, uh, another good job of putting together the budget. Um, realize you had some challenges leading up to it as well, and I, I hope everything's going well. Um, I, I just want to make a quick comment. I had an opportunity this, this past weekend, talked to some young people in the community. Um, just regarding what they're doing this summer, you know, what activities and many of us that have lived here for a while realized that Vicksburg actually used to be a very active community in the summertime. We had Gus Macker tournaments for basketball. We had tennis tournaments. We had men's. Gus Mac tournaments for basketball. We had tennis tournaments. We had men's fast pitch. There's a lot of activity that went on here and you don't see that as much anymore. And these kids were skateboarding. And I know we had a skateboarding park once and there were some issues with it that we no longer have. And so as we, as we look to the future and I think the village, as we go through this budgetary process and improving next year's budget, we kind of closed the book on, on one year and we under another and we start projecting a little bit. And that's kind of what led me to make these comments. I just wanted to suggest that maybe Mr. Lee is, as you're looking in the community now in, in the commercial side of it, but I, I know the schools have a resource that is there that for, for activities and sports. And there's other people in the community, whether it's the, the Lions or other, other fraternal organizations, but it'd be great if we could maybe somewhat get back to that where we, we have these different events in the community, whether it's cornhole tournaments or, or horseshoes. But the one thing I think we all will agree upon, and that is this community is better when we come together and when we have the food trucks downtown or we have various activities. And I think it'd just be really cool if we could again fill those ball fields, those tennis courts, those, that football field or whatever it is with citizens. So just wanted to, to share that comment.
Trustee Wagner.
I've done a good amount of talking tonight, so I think I'm, I'm set. Thank you. Jim and staff, great work on preparing the budget. Appreciate all that.
Trustee Keller.
Uh, well, I, just so the residents understand that this is a heavy lift that the staff does every year with this budget process. And I mean, we're, we're just involved in a small part, but really staff, they work a lot of hours to put this together. And it's, it's to keep us on a, on a good fiscal standing. To dovetail under Rick's, so Jim, thank you, you and your staff, dovetail under what Rick's said. We're talking about doing pickleball courts. You know, that's an opportunity there where they can, you know, maybe they could start a pickleball league or whatever in the community. So, and just so everybody sees, we outlasted the Lions. So I'm, I'm here by myself.
I, do I hear birds?
You hear birds. So other than that, thank you for indulging me tonight.
Thank you, Carl. Trustee Merrill.
I was just saying, I'm sad about today, walking the village and we ended up doing lunch at Main Street Pub. I'm not endorsing them. I'm just saying that they did a really nice job on their social district outdoor seating. And I saw Alex today walk him. Anyway, so we, we had a really good time. It's really cool and people need to check it out and support local, local businesses. Just go to your local businesses and support them. They need it right now.
Were you on the new patio? Is that what you're talking about?
Patio. It was lovely. They had canna lilies. They had plantings and, and good shade. Nice, brand new seating, fencing. And I, I, I'm, I'm sure it costs a lot, but over time, the village is doing really well and people should support it and come out and check it out. It was cool.
Thanks.
Yeah, indeed. Excellent comments in regards to the staff. We all, we all know how many hours they put in to make this happen. And I apologize to Jim for trying to cut out his personal agenda tonight. Get to share that exciting news. So my apologies for that. But I make some assumptions and we all know where we're trying to get to at the end of the day. So all good luck tonight, Rick. You know, I mean, in, in regards to that, I think it's our civic duty, you know, as residents to, to expand the opportunities in the community. I think, I know everyone on this, this call is in, in, you know, 100% indebted into making that happen. So that's, that's all good discussion. I think we get through this infrastructure. Then everybody will take, sit back and take a sigh of relief. And then you'll really see things take off in this community. I, I, I truly believe that this is a, this is just that next step to, you know, greatness. So with that, I'll call it a night on my end. So appreciate everybody being on. If there's anyone that would make a motion to adjourn the meeting, who didn't, yeah.
So moved. So forward.
Trustee Merrill made the motion for the conclusion of the meeting, supported by trustee Reister. All those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed can stay on.
Good job, everyone.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Yeah. Congratulations.